We have been duty officer, Colonel, and National State of Texas. We do have the full president. Welcome each and every one of to our first four things of the year. Usually is the third Tuesday, third Monday every month. Once while we have to change and move the date. We'd like to welcome each and every one of you to come to our board meetings.
All right, everybody please bow your head. Dear heaven and father, we come before you day with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your guidance in our discussions and decisions that we may act with wisdom, fairness, and compassion. Bless our school board members, our teachers, our students, and all those who work to make our schools a better place for learning and growth. May we always keep the best interests of our students at heart, ensuring that their futures are bright and filled with opportunity. Help us to listen with open minds, speak with respect, and lead with integrity. Grant us the strength to make difficult decisions with clarity and patience to work together in unity. May peace and understanding prevail in all that we do here tonight. Thank you for this chance to serve, in your name we pray, amen.
Special guests to do our.
I certainly do. Miss Emma and Miss Cecil. I got Emma Byron, parents are Shannon Bryan. Emma loves to dance, she's been dancing with Artistic Dance Company for six years. She also dances with the Junior Sweethearts. She is so kind, hearted, and sweet, she loves school and all of her teachers and friends, and she loves math. Cecil loves baseball, soccer, he loves playing outside with his friends. He's very sweet and loving, he loves school, his teachers and friends, and he's always giving kind compliments. Let's give them a round of applause.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Joshua ISD will be a highly acclaimed model of educational excellence.
All right, there in our board workshop, we reviewed enrollment, our attendance reports, our A D report, our class count report, child nutrition report, our property tax collection, our monthly financial reports, a monthly year-to-date status of special revenue funds, our quarterly cash and investment report, our check register, police department report, our calendar events, our summer 2024 star retest results, and now we will have our emergent bilingual report.
Well, good evening, my name is Fabia DeBelo, I am the director of bilingual and ESL. And so this evening I am going to give you some highlights, a summary as far as the emergent bilingual programs that we have within our district. So there are three programs that we offer. The first thing, the dual-language one-way program, and that's hosted at Elder Elementary and then Cato Elementary. And this is a program that is pre-K through fifth. And the second program that we offer at our elementary campuses is an ESL content-based, and you'll see ESL pull-out model, which is offered at the secondary level. The big difference, or the difference between these two program types, is that the content base, all of our content area teachers have their ESL certification. In the secondary world, it is our reading language arts at a minimum that have this certification. Regardless of the program, the goal is for our students to acquire an advanced high fluency level in English. So the next part that we're going to look at is student enrollment, again, specific to E Vs at each campus. And what you can see here is that Cato and Elder, where they serve, are students that participate in the one-way dual-language program. That's why you see those higher numbers when we compare to North, Flum, and Staples. And then Laughlin has a large E V population as well. And they are very unique in the situation in the secondary level where they serve our students in six through eight that are newcomers, and that means that they are new to the country. And then our numbers, as you can see across the board, are definitely increased, increasing. This year, and this is based on a summer snapshot, so that means all of our needs information by the end of October. We did have eight hundred and seventy-five students served either through one of these programs. Looking at the information or the numbers compared to the Gen Ed population, our E Vs are about fifteen percent of the student population within our district, and compared, comparing the information or numbers to the last five years, we're increasing about one percent every year. So some of the curriculum and resources, you can of course find on the Joshua ISD page. And so I didn't count secondary, this is very specific to elementary, because that is where you're going to see the differences, because again, we offer the one-way dual-language program and then the ESL content base. So in the dual-language, we do have these resources available for our students in Spanish. But once they have or hit the secondary level, all of our resources are in English. However, our teachers at the secondary level do an amazing job as far as utilizing tools such as a Google Translate, AI, which has been live-changing, and making sure that we are looking at our students' knowledge, not as far as the English, but the actual skill itself. Assessments that are specific in the E V world are pre-loss and loss link, which identifies our students, and then some similarities with STAR, E O Cs, district-created formative assessments. But then, in our E V world, we have TELPOS, and we'll get into that a little bit later. T E A just required me to go over as far as the identification process and then the reclassification process. Going to make it hopefully pretty simple. Student comes into our district and they have to fill out what's a called a home language survey. If a language other than English is documented on there, that gives us, the state, the district, permission to test, and we'll use either pre-loss or loss links. If that student does not reach an advanced high or proficient level, then that student falls under that E V umbrella. And so we hold meetings with their parents, offer them the different programs that are available, and so they'll remain in those programs until they reclassify. Reclassification means that students have met that advanced high in TELPOS, which is a composite score, which I will come back to later as well, which is great. And then students have to earn at least an approaches level on their reading language arts, STAR, E O C assessment. So now we get to the data piece. And so looking at this information, of course, we start off with 2022 and then last year's scores. And looking at this information, we do see some reds on here, which is what are we going to do about this? How is it that we're going to support our students, but then also our teachers in trying to make sure that they have the right tools, the right resources, and support in their day-to-day instruction? You do see, when we look at this first, this includes all tests. And yes, we can ignore the fact that there were some decline within the performance of our E V group. And this next statement I make be, in a positive way, so I don't want for it to be misfenced through. And looking at the Gen Ed side of it, we did identify some similar patterns as far as either increasing in the approaches needs or masters level, and then also seeing a decrease as far as student performance. So what that tells us is that we need to have those conversations with our Gen Ed counterparts to make sure that we are addressing this situation at hand together. And so here you have the reading language arts, again, similar patterns. Some celebrations in math that we did maintain or increase with the approaches and needs level. And then with science, definitely an area of opportunity that again, we are looking at with the day-to-day instructions. Social studies, again, very similar to science, and so we're going to go ahead and jump ahead to TELPOS. Here is where we did see some huge gains. In previous years, and I'm going to leave this up here for a second, but jump ahead. Last year for twenty-two, twenty-three, we only had ten students reclassify. What that means again is that they exited L PAC Services, which is the committee that the students are supported, and they've met that advanced high English proficiency level. This year, because of instruction, because of one of the resources that we use, which is Summit Page Ball, which simulates TELPOS, we did have one hundred and five students reclassify, which is a huge, huge celebration. Being transparent, being honest with you. Part of this is because the state of Texas finally came to the realization of recognizing the composite score. Previously, students had to earn advanced high in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Now, as long as students have that average of advanced high within all four domains, and again, testing in English without any accommodations, that's why that number increased. And hopefully, the goal is of course, that we continue to see that number increase. So we jumped to PD, which has definitely been a focus within the last couple of years. And so this is just an outline of all of the E V opportunities that either admin or teachers had the opportunity to attend. Last year, the focus was at the secondary level, because we do have the bilingual program to be able to support our littles and elementary. And so that will be a continued area of focus in ensuring and supporting our secondary teachers who definitely want to be right by our students. But again, are, we're just needing to build their capacity and the tools that they have. So last year, I have served in this role, I think for five or six years, and we have never had to file an exception or waiver for teachers not having the appropriate certification in any one of these programs. When I make this comment at my regional meetings, they are in disbelief. But we have been very lucky, and that goes to the school board and everyone here in doing a great job in just retaining these teachers and ensuring that they have the appropriate certification, because if not, then we have to set ten percent of our bilingual money aside, which is a lot, for training in PD. So that is a huge, huge success for us as a district. As far as the parental and community involvement, we offer programs such as family literacy and adult ESL every Friday. So if you, anybody in your community, is needing support with that, it is services that we offer free to anyone who resides within our community. You do not have to have a student attending one of our schools currently, so please make sure that you pass up on. This year, we also held, I'm sorry, last year, we had a family tradition, Iver Laughlin, where are you? Always has hosted this the last two years for us. And so the twenty-three, we had seventy families, this year we had eighty-eight families. So that parental involvement has also decreased within our program. As again, going back to our Gen Ed counterparts, we want to meet the same goals that Joshua ISD has already set in place for all students. And that is going to be that ninety percent of our students need that approaches level, fifty percent at that masters level. And though we did jump up from ten to a hundred and five, the goal like last year is going to be that we increase that number by fifty percent as well. And that closes my information, are there any questions in regard to the information that I shared? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now on our campus presentation, and the campus that's going to present tonight is Plum Creek Elementary.
Hi, everybody, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Shelley Green, and I'm the principal at Plum Creek Elementary. Jennifer Piles is our assistant principal, and we have an intern assistant principal this year who was unable to make it tonight due to outside obligations. My name is Tiffany, and we have been just truly blessed out there in Concord, Kansas City. So our campus has done a good job of doing meeting approaches on our STAR test. But our meets and masters are not where we want them to be. So our focus this year is really focusing on advancing our meets and masters presentations for all of our STAR tests across the board. And so the presentation that the board is due tonight is one of the ways that we are working towards getting our meets and masters presentations up higher, and that is really hands-on learning. So thank you to the board for having us, Cecil and Emma, thank you so much. We have visitors tonight, guys, from the U K, here to watch Cecil and Emily, so we appreciate you asking for us all. Thank you so much.
Research has demonstrated that whole brain teaching is highly effective in enhancing learning outcomes. This method emphasizes hands-on learning, which is crucial in the classroom because it actively involves students with the material. By engaging in physical activities or projects, students move beyond passive listening and become more deeply involved in the learning process. Hands-on learning makes abstract concepts more tangible and easier to grasp. For instance, building a simple machine while studying physics helps clarify complex ideas by providing practical experience. Additionally, this approach strengthens memory retention, since students are physically interacting with the content rather than just reading or listening. Furthermore, hands-on activities often make learning more enjoyable and stimulating. When students are enthusiastic and engaged, they are more likely to persist and fully absorb the material. This approach also fosters problem-solving and critical thinking skills as students navigate and resolve challenges during their projects. In addition to our hands-on activities in our classrooms, Plum Creek has a morning step classroom. Mr. Thurston proudly wears his Golden Tickets, and he gives twenty Golden Tickets to students who are sitting quietly, reading, or working in the morning gym. Upon receiving a Golden Ticket, these students are able to go to the library to do hands-on activities. Some of the activities they can do are chess and Jenga, coloring and exploration with magnets, playing Connect Four, and building using Legos. These activities help students with patience and focus, pattern recognition, and decision-making. Our students especially love to use gears and hoists to build the Tower of Power. They built their structure and had gears and hoists. This helps with understanding mechanical and engineering principles. The Ninja Switch is another fun activity for our students. By playing this game, it helps with fine motor skills, strategic thinking, and understanding cause and effect. Here are some of the classroom activities our kids have been doing. Students working groups to solve problems and build writing concepts. Explore different items for science concepts, using manipulatives for hands-on math, and letter and word recognition. Overall, hands-on learning through models and methods like whole brain teaching makes education more effective and more engaging. Thank you for allowing us to share some of our hands-on learning activities with you, and we hope you have a great night.
Would like to say, Ms. Green, I certainly do like your Friday morning reading committee that you have at your campus.
We have a lot of fun on Friday dance.
A lot of dance stars.
Thank you, sir, and he might want to give us demonstration. Thank you very much. All right, this time, this is the best part of the board meeting, is recognition of our students and professors and teachers. And it was all right, Dickerson, you can go right ahead.
Absolutely, the first group we're going to recognize is our Joshua cadets, if they'll just come to the front, please. They are led by Lieutenant Colonel Davidson. The Joshua rifle teams traveled to Anson, Alabama in July to train and compete with the best marksmen in the nation. At a civilian marksmanship program section match on July twenty-sixth, six cadets made finals. Joshua precision two shooters took first, second, and third place. In order, they are Brooklyn Rings, Ethan Cato, and Cooper Den. Although they were competing as individuals, had we taken the top four Joshua shooters and scored them as a team, it would have been a national record. We expect a very successful twenty-four, twenty-five season. And last Wednesday, we were informed that Cadet Rings was selected by the Legion of Valor for their prestigious Bronze Cross for Achievement. The Legion of Valor is a fraternal organization comprised of the remaining Medal of Honor and Service Cross recipients. Representatives of Legion will present the award of the Joshua ISD Birthday Ball on October second. All of these cadets are fine representatives of our program and our school, but see them around the block. Our next group is our twenty-twenty-four Harden Simmons University State Lineman Challenge, five A state champions. They are led by.
Number four.
Led by Coach Yarman, Coach Payne, Coach Carms, Coach Good, and Coach Gilmore. On June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, the Joshua Owls football team, Big Bellas, primarily offensive defensive line, headed west to compete in the annual Harden Simmons University State Lineman Challenge. aligned, headed west to compete in the annual Harden Simmons University State Limbman Challenge. To qualify for the State Limbman Challenge, the team attended the regional qualifying meeting in San Marcos, Texas, a week prior in taking first place in the 5A classification. Other state qualifiers included Abilene Cooper, Abilene Wiley, Azel, Corinado, Dennison, Denton Heim, Georgetown, Kaufman, Lake Belton, Liberty Hills, Montgomery, Mount Pleasant, Red Oak, and Texas High. Joshua placed first overall in the bench press competition, and the Farmers carried second in obstacle fours, third in the truck push, tire flip, and dumbbell stack. To finish the meet for double points, Joshua placed second in the tug-of-war behind Texas High. JHS was named state champions with an overall of 62 points over Texas High's 59, Mount Pleasant's 49, Lake Belton's 38, Azel 35, and Georgetown and Liberty Hills 28. At this time, I'm going to ask Coach Carms to recognize who we have up here representing.
So today, we have Noah Newman, Trevor Meyer, Alex Jimenez, Dylan Spann, Bolden Oaks, Elijah Alvarez, Gavin McManus, Maddox Caffey, Lewis Keane, Marquise Wilson, Arthur Knutson, Eric Martinez, Eli Martinez, Benjamin Schneck, Mikey Duran, and John Pitt.
Ready, three, two, one.
All right, the next group we'd like to recognize is our Joshua High School Yearbook led by Mr. Vogelstein. Mr. P.
Yeah, understandable, understandable.
So we wanted to come by today and just present a copy of the yearbook from last year to the board and to admin. Just kind of go over, just we wanted to deal with timings, just to make sure that we understand that the time we spent, we spent here, the yearbook is supposed to be nostalgic and represent all the good times that we've had, good or bad, regardless of what, you know, kind of what happened. So we did a nice 320-page book last year, it's a pretty few pages, but this year, we did all full color, and really, really proud of this, so we wanted to present this to the board and to admin.
All right, the next person we'd like to recognize is Ms. Nikki Feibinger. Ms. Feibinger was awarded the United Way Power Partnership Award. The United Way Power Partnership Award recognizes companies and people who personify collaboration. These dedicated and creative collaborators extend their hearts, minds, dollars, and/or goods to further the mission of the United Way in a valuable and measurable way. Let's get Miss Nikki right.
Now it's time for the public forum portion of the board meeting. Our board confirms comments from citizens of the district, our employees, anyone who wishes to speak either as an individual or as a representative of our group, by doing so at this time, the board asks that any comments pertaining to educational issues be no longer than three minutes. We have two signed up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stormy Stanford, and I'm here to address an incident that happened at school, at the Joshua High School campus on September 12, 2024. Another student made a comment about shooting up the school in a joking manner, and unfortunately, my friend miscommunicated the situation by suggesting that I had said the student was armed, which is not true. The local police were involved in the investigation, and I provided my true statement to them. Despite this, one of the principals chose to disregard the police investigation and my statement, instead relying on and believing the erroneous text messages circulating the school. A school shooting is no joking matter, and the gravity of such a statement should be taken seriously. However, the real issue here is the spreading of misinformation, as my friend did, which has caused unnecessary chaos. The principal, as an adult and an educator, should not engage or rely on child gossip. She should have the maturity and professionalism to discern between gossip and factual information. If any disciplinary action were warranted, it should have been directed towards the student for making the inappropriate comment and not towards myself, who had merely, who was merely trying to clarify the situation and had no involvement in spreading misinformation. Rather than investigating the matter thoroughly and fairly, the principal accused me of the spreading of misinformation. During an interview with me, she not only accused me of lying, but also used inappropriate language, stating this is BS. And it also made me feel like a principal should not be saying that to me, because she thought in her group tongue, and it also caused me to start freaking out a little, and I didn't really know what to say. Then I requested, furthermore, she revoked my ban privileges, sent me to in-school suspension, and then threatened further disciplinary actions such as DAEP and additional suspension. When I requested evidence to support these allegations, she refused to provide any, and she also used scare tactics by threatening me with potential defamation of character charges from other students. I believe that this incident, it really brought me down and hurt a lot, because I was threatened by another kid about a school shooting. I told my friend, because it was very scary, about all the threats going on that night with the Arlington game we were supposed to be traveling to, and that school was threatened to get shot up. Whenever I had told my friend, and she started to rumor around the school about that kid having a gun, then I was brought punishment on, and I am still on punishment. And I do not understand why I am on punishment, and not the kid who made the accusations, who also returned to band this morning, and I am still not allowed to return. And so I just wanted to say, I really don't understand or appreciate anything that is going on and is making me not feel safe in the school district. And many of my friends have told me, if a kid were to tell them that they were going to shoot up the school, they would not tell anyone, and they would let the school get shot up, because they are also afraid that they would get put on ISS or DAEP or get sent to further discipline for speaking up about a school shooting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hickerson, we'll head back to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Krista, go back to the floor now.
Hi, my name is Krista Vanet. I served 12 years in the United States Marine Corps in active duty. My son attends Joshua High School. My concern this evening is of a threat reported against a student at Joshua High School and how the staff and police at JISD have handled this incident. Yesterday, there was a second assassination attempt against former President of the United States and current GOP candidate Donald Trump. The FBI interviewed the assailant's family members. The family, the son specifically, responded that he had no clue that his father was capable of such a thing. The FBI has admitted that this assassin has been on their radar since 2019. On May 24, 2022, 19 students and two teachers lost their lives and 17 more were injured in Uvalde as police stood by and did not enter the facility. I'm sure our Congressman Roger Williams will be disappointed to hear the failures at Joshua High School. The fact that a threat has been reported and a student is back on school grounds today is beyond egregious actions taken by Joshua High School and the administration. Instead, the student who made the report is being victim blamed and shamed. I am calling on the school board to investigate these claims. Furthermore, I am calling on the school board to require a psychological evaluation for any student accused of making claims of violence against students. If students can't return to school until being fever-free, the student should not be allowed to return to school until all homicidal thoughts or comments have been assessed by a licensed professional. Teachers, police, principals, students, administrators, and politicians are not qualified to provide a psychological evaluation as to the seriousness of violent claims.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hickerson. Head back to the office. That's all we have signed up. Very much. Moving on to subject A, Consider or Dismissed Pretend to Adam.
All right, so subject A is, we've approved in our minutes from our previous meeting, August 12, August 26, and September 11. We do have the Fudge Amendment of $5,000 that we are transferring from 199.62 to 69.10 at the Police Software Account to Athletics. And then we have our purchases over $50,000 for the start of the year, start of the school years, and those include electricity, transportation, district gas, water, sewer. So those are there for you guys to take a look at. So my recommendation is to approve and send Adam to as discussed.
Motion by Ms. Brooke. I hear a second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Subject B, Consider Cooperative Purchasing Fees Paid by Joshua ISD.
Okay, so these were required in the Texas Education Code 44.031 to report cooperative management fees annually to ensure transparency and accountability within the public procurement process. So our recommendation is to approve the cooperative purchasing fees paid by Joshua ISD.
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative purchasing.
Motion by Ms. Lee. I hear a second. Second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Subject C, Consider 24-25 School Health Advisory Council Members.
Okay, just like what the cooperative fees, you approve this every year, and these are representatives, parent representatives from each campus, and those are represented by segments of community and school district, which provides advice to the district on coordinating school health programming and its impact on student health and learning. So my recommendation is to approve the 24-25 Chapman Members as presented.
Make a motion to approve subject E as stated.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Subject D, Consider 24-25 Safety and Supportive School Program Teams.
Okay, just like what the cooperative fees, you approve this every year, and these are representatives, parent representatives from each campus, and those are represented by segments of community and school district, which provides advice to the district on coordinating school health programming and its impact on student health and learning. So my recommendation is to approve the 24-25 Chapman Members as presented.
Make a motion to approve subject E as stated. Motion by Ms. Cody Lee. I hear a second. Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Subject F, Consider 24-25 Safe and Supporting School Program Teams. Consider 24-25 Attendance Committees.
Okay, so state law board policy requires the board to appoint one or more attendance committees to hear petitions for class credit or a final grade by students who have not met the 90% rule and have not earned class credit or a final grade. Joshua ISD has attendance committees at each campus, so that the committee students or parents will request credit from, includes the students, teachers, and administrators. So my recommendation would be to approve the 24-25 Attendance Committees as presented.
Make a motion to approve subject E as stated.
Motion by Ms. Ryan Watson. I hear a second. Second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Now, subject F, Consider 24-25 Safe and Supportive School Programs.
The Senate 11 Texas Education Code 37115 establishes a safety and supportive school program. Teams District shall establish, establish these teams to serve each campus of the district in child diet policies and procedures for those teams, which is approved by the board trustees. My recommendation would be to approve the 24-25 safety and supportive school program teams as presented.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve subject D as stated.
Motion by Ms. Cody Lee. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Subject T, Consider Revision to Policy EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Line.
Okay, with our switch to a four-day week, we adjusted our grading periods from a six-week grading period to a nine-week grading period, and so that needs to be adjusted within EIC local policy, and that's all the adjustment is. So my recommendation is to approve the changes to EIC local in order to update the policy deadline with our current grading cycle.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision.
Motion by Mr. Kevin Lee. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All in favor? Six oh. Subject G, Consider Resolution to Approve Appointment of Investment Officers.
So with Ms. Martin, Cardle Martin coming on as our new chief financial officer, the resolution will appoint her as an approved district investment officer. And then for, if I remember the previous appointment of Corey Erickson and Amber Meadows as approved district investment officers, Amber, no, any other personnel previously appointed. So our recommendation is to approve the resolution to approve appointment of investment officers.
I made a motion that we approved the resolution to approve the appointment of investment officers.
Motion by Ms. Brooke. I hear a second. Second by Ms. Dakota Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Six oh. Subject G, consider resolution authorizing approved signatories for our financial accounts.
Okay, so this request will update the approved signatories with the district approved depository and any other financial institutions that may may have or may have district funds on deposit. And just like the previous one, it will revoke any previous employee as authorized signatories for all district financial accounts. My recommendation is to approve the resolution to authorize and approve signatories for the Joshua ISD, Joshua Independent School District.
Mayor Volson.
I make a motion we approve subject H as presented.
Motion by Ms. Wilson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Six oh. Subject J, consider adding authorized representatives for the Lone Star Investment Pool.
Okay, so this request is to update the authorized representatives for the Lone Star Investment Pool, updating that to Carla Martin. And so my recommendation is to approve the addition of authorized representatives for the Lone Star Investment Pool.
Mayor Volson.
Make a motion to approve subject J as stated.
Motion by Ms. Ryan Watson. I hear a second.
Second.
Second. By Ms. Dakota Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Subject K, consider resolution of many authorized representatives to protect the tax pool and investment services.
Just like your Lone Star Investment Pool, the tax pool investment pool, it will be updated for authorized representatives, and our recommendation is to approve the resolution and amend authorized representatives.
Mayor Volson.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Ms. Kevin Lee. I hear a second.
Second.
Second. By Ms. Ryan Watson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Six oh. Subject L, consider change in board meeting day for October 2024.
Okay, so our October 21st meeting is held on that Monday, the 21st, but I will be attending the Thompson Leadership Academy Session 2. And so the request would be to move that to Wednesday, October 16th. So my recommendation is to approve the school board meeting day change.
I make a motion we approve the school board meeting day change for October.
Motion by Ms. Brooke. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. At this time, the board will convene in closed session to discuss how to override that fixed open meeting day.